I'd like to call this Tuesday, April 29th, school business meeting to order. Mrs. Yell, can you take the role, please?
Lee Riden.
I'm here.
Juliet Walker.
Present.
Sarah Hall is absent. Kathleen Shaw.
Present.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Brianna Higgins is absent. And Andrew Bogart.
Here.
All right, great. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Walker.
Okay. First item on our agenda is public comment, and I would say that we are having some technical difficulties with either Zoom access. So is there anyone here in the room who would like to participate in public comment?
Councilor McCollough, you good?
Yep.
Yep, all right.
All right. And unfortunately, just because of technical difficulties, cannot include the Zoom public comment tonight. I think if we do have success in logging in and there does appear to be somebody on there who would like to participate in public comment, maybe the committee could consider reopening that item. The next item is the warrant.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the act to get $461,036.98 to be approved and forwarded to the City Auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Okay. Everyone received the warrant electronically. Any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes ayes. Next item on the agenda is meeting minutes for April 7th, 2025. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or corrections? I have one item, which is on the last page, under the recorded roll call vote. It said that Mayor Sean Rudin was absent, but he was actually present. That's okay. Any other corrections or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Vice Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is our report from our student representative, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you very much. We have no current news from the Brezhner and Mullen schools tonight, so we'll move directly to the NOC. Congratulations are in order for the cast and crew of Newsies at the NOC Middle School, under the direction of the Theater Department Head, Brian Nickerson. Students delivered an incredible performance showcasing their talent, dedication, and collaborative spirit. MCAS math, science, and civics assessments are also underway for the next two weeks. Our math team and students have been working tirelessly throughout the year in their preparations, and all students are being made well-prepared for the exams. Additionally, the NOC will hold a student showcase on June 5th. This will be an evening dedicated to celebrating student growth, learning, and achievement. This event reflects the school system's commitment to the portrait of a graduate and offers families a meaningful opportunity to reconnect with the work happening in classrooms. Moving on to the high school, student poets Katie Seaton, Lucius Nelson, Nadia Toth, and Sophie LaFranchise amazed the audience at the Newburyport Literary Festival this past Saturday with their poetry readings. The students were the opening act, preceding internationally acclaimed poets Rena Espuyat and Martine Espada. Furthermore, during the April vacation, two trips overseas took place, one to France and Spain and the other to Central Europe. Both provided a tremendous experience and supported the objectives of the Global Citizenship Program. Thank you to chaperones Mary Rakowski, Eileen McConie, Bobby Felzone, Stephanie Phillips, and Gary Matloff for making this experience possible. Lastly, I would also like to acknowledge the students who participated in these programs. They served as strong ambassadors of the Newburyport community and gained powerful insights from diverse global cultures. That was all.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And I don't know, will we get to see you again before you graduate?
Perhaps one more time.
Okay. I hope so. Yeah. We've really enjoyed having you be part of our team, so thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is fiscal year '26 budget.
All right. Thank you. Scroll to the budget portion. And I'll review some of the highlights that we talked about before at our last meeting and some of the changes. So as we all know, I think when we look at the challenges, and we've talked about these, the uncertain, I think, challenges with the state and federal funding right now, I think every week we're learning more and more. For example, and this is why we've been talking about food service, I think, the last couple of meetings. We know that part of the cuts and the reductions occurred for the USDA, which actually across the country will have an impact on food service programs. You know, for example, Newburyport's part of the Brown Box Program, which is a program that we receive free food throughout the school year, around $3,000 per month. And from my understanding, that Brown Box Program is no longer going to be part of the food service program. So these are some of the challenges that we're talking about, also monitoring, you know, the tariffs and the impact on the budget, which we talked about before. So we know we're going to see goods and services at some point. We anticipate there'll be a rise in cost there. Good news, once again, in Massachusetts, the House and Ways and Means Budget Proposal released there, proposing a $20 million increase for the governor's budget for the school meals program. So we do anticipate that breakfast and lunch will be provided again in the state of Massachusetts. So that's free lunch and breakfast for all students. And ever since we've done that coming out of COVID, our students district-wide has increased significantly. So it's a great program for all kids. So that's one piece that I think is helpful to be in Massachusetts, is the governor's budget, and state officials understand the importance of meal programs in schools. As we said, with the tariffs that are in place, we did see the costs, and we pointed this out last time, of our Chromebooks. Typically, six grade Chromebooks is around $60,000 to $65,000. We saw a $16,000 increase, you know, as of the last month or so. We do have some good news. It's all not bad news, especially from the state. So the House and Ways and Means Budget Proposal, they also increased their per pupil aid for Chapter 70 from $75 to $150 per student. So that would be an increase for the city of Newburyport of an additional $300,000 for Chapter 70. So that's a positive. Our circuit breaker right now reimbursement is still at the 75%, but there is a proposal to increase that. So we're hopeful that our circuit breaker reimbursement, you know, will be increased over the next couple of months. That will be extremely helpful for special education and special education transportation. So overall, our overall budget summary, as we look at this year's budget, this, you know, I was talking today, this is not an enhancement of a budget. I look at, or enrichment. I look at this year's budget for all of us. It's almost like a survival budget to protect the programs that we've built over the past seven years. So as we look at our budget for this year, and the slight increases that we have overall, it's really to maintain our programs that we've really are proud of over the past several years. So as requested, we were looking for a 3% increase for the city appropriation and through the work of our financial team. We're just below a 3% city allocation. We're at a 2.96. The overall school budget increases only 1.27% overall. And as we know, we've shifted the sources of funds. We're utilizing even more school choice and more revolving accounts to bring that city allocation down. But then you'll see on the other side, a slight increase in the overall budget to the Other aspects that we did, we've decreased our FTEs overall. At 5.87 FTEs in positions that weren't filled or aren't going to be filled for next year. And then, as you all recall through our budget preparation, the non-personnel, every cost center, we reduced, you know, throughout the budget. So as we said, for us, the reduction, the FTEs, those deductions, so the only increase you're going to see is in personnel, and that's because of the negotiated contracts. That, as we said, we have a MOU with the NTA. We've settled our IA contracts, and we're in the process of settling or negotiating to the end our AFSMI contracts. And once we have those final numbers, we'll have specific numbers that we can plug in into the formula. The only one that's kind of out there right now is the AFSMI union contract that we're in negotiations with now. So that's kind of the overall of where we're at. I also had some school committee questions that came in that, you know, I'll address, and then we can go through the budget book. We've already went through that entire budget book, but I'll have follow-up questions from there. So some of the questions that we received is, you know, why is there a difference in the increased cost across the four schools? So the Brezhner Hand, if you remember back at our last budget proposal, we took district-wide nursing staff that was under district, and we pushed the nursing staff back into each building, into their individual schools. Remember that the Brezhner Hand has the largest IA staffing patterns there because it's really your most vulnerable students, pre-K to grade three. So that's our largest staff in the district, and they support all of those students, pre-K to three. And then remember with the increase in support staff, you also are increasing steps and lane changes moving into next year. The increase at the NOC, once again, nurses move back into their individual schools, and we move the program, the IDC program, which is our Independent Development Center, that is now solely a NOC program. So we moved that from the Mullen to the NOC, so that staffing followed them, and that's where you're going to see that increase. And then, once again, your steps and lane changes for that entire school population, for the faculty and support staff. So those are your two big cost centers, and that's where you see those larger increases there. Mullen is, obviously, we're moving that IDC program. Their costs didn't go up as much, and the same as the high school, maintaining a lot of their staff. The other piece, as we talk about school choice, you know, how do we ensure that class sizes at NHS will support the strong academic outcomes with the addition of school choice? Because when you see 20 students at the freshman level, and then I think we have five sophomore and five, you know, proposed at grade 11 and 12. For school choice, for the high school scheduling, it's a lot easier to absorb those students because all of those students, if you recall high school, you're going to have different levels of math, and you have different levels of all your content area. You'll have college prep, you'll have honors, you have multiple electives. So those 20 students that are added into that class are going to be dispersed throughout the school. So each student will have seven, you know, freshmen would have seven different teachers, and then those teachers, elective teachers, would change mid-year. It's a lot easier to absorb that versus when you see a elementary classroom and you have 23 seats or you have 22 seats. Those students are there all day long. So if you are filling a class and there's 18 students in that one class, then you know you could add two or three students into that class. So the high school, there's a lot more flexibility in their high school schedule. So that wouldn't have any impact on any of the academic programs. Class sizes are still well-maintained, you know, throughout the high school and throughout the district. School choice revenue, is it used or earmarked for specific programs? I'm going to say we don't earmark for a specific program at school choice, especially this year. We utilize those funds district-wide to offset the city allocations. So the city allocations and taxpayer contribution to the school overall budget is offset by our school choice students. That revenue is coming from other districts and not Newburyport. So we don't typically earmark one specific program for school choice funds. Another question that came in is for funding, do we have enough funding for this year? As I said, we're in, I think, a survival mode budget season. So we're not, we already have developed our foundational, I think, excellence. This isn't the year we're looking to enhance a lot of those programs. This, right now, we're looking to maintain all of these great programs that we have. And it's really our best effort is to build upon that foundation, probably in the future. But we all understand the challenges of what's happening, not only through the nation, through the state, through the city of Newburyport. So this budget is just really to maintain all of our programs and the majority of our staffing patterns. Will there be an impact as we develop the budget in the future? I think if we're at this, you know, if you look at our budget for this year, you know, 1.27, an increase overall budget between 1 and 1.5% for multiple years, obviously would not be, would have an impact on a lot of the stuff that, you know, all of the programs that we're doing. So, and I think that even our increases at this point isn't even at the rate of inflation. So I think every budget season is a challenge, and I think right now we've answered the challenge for this budget season going into next year. And then when we get into next year, we'll deal with what we have in front of us. But I don't, you know, I wouldn't anticipate an increase of a school budget, you know, 1%, you know, for multiple years would be beneficial. But I think for right now, our goal and understanding what the goal was and understanding the fiscal constraints, I think, not only for the city but throughout the state, we really utilize a lot of our revolving accounts to offset the costs and to bring that city allocation down. And so I'm very comfortable in the sense of, and proud of the team, of really developing a budget that we're maintaining all of the great things that we've built up for seven years. Our music programs, our art programs, foreign language programs, we've, you know, added sports, and so I think we have a thriving district right now. And I think this budget that we're proposing tonight, we'll maintain that for next year. And then we'll just deal with our challenges next year budgetarily. But I think it's something for all of us as we go through, you know, this year's budget and a new administration is, I think, going to be uncertain times and challenges as we move through the rest of this year and going into next year. And so I also believe for us, it's very important for us to try to, I mean, right now, I think of revolving accounts and the school choice accounts are low, but it's really important for us, I think, to emphasize maintaining as much of that revolving accounts as we can in anticipation of the uncertain times that we have. And that's kind of, as we go through the budget notes, so really nothing has changed, just for the viewers that are watching. Professional salary lines, so obviously with the contracts, there's steps, lanes, longevity, COLA, cost of living, that's into that budget. We've reclassified our FTEs throughout the budget book, so we've moved, obviously, like for one example, the nurses back into the buildings. We also reclassified some of our interventionists where they're split, I think a .3 at the Mullen and a .7 at the Brezhner Hand, and we covered this, I think, at our last meeting. The consolidation of the NTA and AFSMI stipends. Our custodial overtime, as you recall, that was under NHS athletics, so we pushed that overtime with James McSweeney's help back to the schools, so every school has an overtime budget. Our retirements, we continue to work with our faculty and support staff that are looking to retire. And, you know, and with that retirement, we can reduce some of the cost of salary with the lower staff step lane change. And then our revolving accounts to reflect the actual balances, instead of utilizing projected revenues, to actually use the actual revenues that we have moving into next year. And then the other piece, our special ed and transportation in the budget book was broken down into different lines to reflect our end-of-the-year report and state reporting regulations. And as we said, the revolving accounts that we've utilized this year, from the 325 to the .96, we just reallocated the funding sources and dipped into more other revolving accounts to bring the budget to under the 3%. So those are my talking points. It's still the same budget book with the notes, with all the different explanations. So if you guys have any questions, I just, once again, want to thank our principals, budget holders, our leadership team. I think from November all the way to now, understanding fiscally where everyone is, I think, throughout the state, and for them to be very strategic on our budgeting, especially, I would say, over the past five years. So where I think Newburyport Public Schools is in a great place, where we're not seeing, knock on wood, cuts of programs and things like that, because the last couple of years, we've developed our staffing patterns appropriately.
All right. So questions for the superintendent?
I'll go first. Just, you know, I just want to appreciate all the hard work that went into this budget. You know, originally I had set a guideline of 3%. I think the last school committee meeting, I did share that, you know, health insurance is up 14.8%. That's about $900,000 worth of school employees in that increase. So I do appreciate you going back and trying to get under that 3% number. I said this is, you know, it's a challenging year. Anytime that, like, you have an outside pressure like that, that pretty much drops $2 million within your budget, you've got to make some tough decisions. So I appreciate that. We're kind of doing similar things on the city side. You know, we're still putting final touches on the budget. There will be a budget, city budget meeting forum next week at City Hall on May 6 at 7:00 PM to kind of get like a little sneak peek of the budget this year. But I think we have somewhere between 10 and 15 FTEs that we're looking to reduce this year. So, you know, it is a tight year, but I do think, you know, we're doing our best to put budgets together that keeps moving the city forward. I know pathways is still included, right, in our program? So I mean, the things that we've added in the last couple of years and that we're continuing to do, I think is a huge positive for the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Callahan?
Do you know when you think you may have the AFSMI contract maybe settled?
We're hoping we have a negotiation next week. We're hoping we make significant progress at that one. I would say within the next couple of weeks. That should be so.
What's that?
Their IDB?
Not me.
They're not?
No.
Is there a plan maybe to do that with that group?
I think maybe down the road, but right now, I think it's a smaller union, so we have, I think, good informal conversations. We're utilizing the same strategy, it's just we're not really having a facilitator. So it's a very cordial meeting where we're collaborating.
Alex.
Other questions? Mr. Bogart?
Just a couple of quick ones. Thank you for answering those questions. I really appreciate it, especially I threw a couple at you under the gun, so you fielded those impressively. On the, so I understand it's not really an earmark. Given that it's a lean or constrained or survival budget, that's a good term, with the school choice funds, is there areas that you foresee that being used most, where the most urgency is?
I think for, I think what we're watching is the entitlement grants. And I would say our English learner programs right now, because we do receive funding for entitlement grants, and then also our L programs. So if that funding is cut, like even from now to or into next year, I think that's where we're positioning in anticipation. Because we want to make sure we're providing those services for those students and those families. So I think that would be one area that we would earmark in case of an emergency.
This is an answerable question, but is there any indication, is there any word on the federal situation?
I don't think so. I mean, I mean, he had the national rhetoric, and you see what's happening to me. I know Massachusetts might be on the list, too. But our Attorney General and Governor, I think the good news for us is we have a very supportive governor, and I would say our state officials understand the importance of education, meal programs, things like that, so that part of their budget is to make sure that those are being funded. So I think as a school system, that makes us feel pretty good that we have that support. But I don't think any of us know what, you know, what's going to happen. I know there's, you know, above us, there's a lot of court cases going on and things like that. But I do believe, and even when we go to the city and city council, I would maybe stop strategizing as a city, the what-if questions, right? So if IDA gets cut, which is around $600,000 of funding that goes to our special education programs, our most vulnerable kids, you know, maybe strategize if that happens, or federal funds get cut so bad, meal programs, that's the one that we're also looking at, is right now, our food service program is fully funded by the state, and we know, like, some of the cuts that happen at the federal level are going to impact the cost and things like that. So right now, I think that would be another program that, you know, maybe we strategize down the road with the mayor and the city, like, you know, what happens if all of a sudden, you know, we're cut $1 million or things like that? But right now, we don't have any knowledge of that's going to happen. But I always try to plant ahead a little bit, you know, we should be ready just in case.
Yeah, and I think the House budget has included the meals in it for now. They made that announcement the other day.
That was the good news, yeah.
But yeah, we'll have to wait and see about the rest, but.
Anything else? Just a last thing on the school choice. It looks like that's probably going to go to a lottery. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Yeah. And Principal Wolf's probably, how does that shake out in terms of class size?
Class size, I will class size because we were talking about the high school. So the high school class size is, it's going to be maintained, because you're not really adding, when you're adding 20 students, it's not like you're adding 20 students to that, like, one class.
Sure.
So, Mr. Wolf, he has, every time he looks at his schedule, he knows that he can absorb so many students, especially at the high school level. So class size aren't going to, like, 22 to 30 all of a sudden. I think they're very manageable.
So overall, I know it's not set in stone by any means at this point, but you'd expect the class sizes to be level, more or less?
Same as nothing, no change about class sizes.
Great. Yeah, no, thank you for answering all that. I really appreciate it.
I just, to follow up on some of the questions, thank you, Mr. Bogart. Just a clarification, because I know folks, you know, there's law jargon in school education. But entitlement grants, even though they're called entitlement grants, they actually are for the most vulnerable populations. And they are focused on what you and others have described as the unfunded mandates, whereas we have to serve certain populations of students under the law, even though we also want to do that, but we are required by law. And if we didn't have some of the entitlement grants, we would have to figure out a way to fund that without any additional assistance from the government.
Correct. Yeah. Entitlement grants grant a certain demographic of students, and schools are entitled for that funding.
Right.
So our entitlement grants are based on different student populations, and that's where the funds come in from the federal government. And remember, the Department of Education, they oversaw the entitlement grants, they oversaw the IDA, which is a special education grant, and that department, this federal level is closing, so, but the funds that, you know, the funds are going to be given to the states somehow, so.
Yeah. The funds are technically still protected by federal legislation. So it'd be a much, again, they're getting moved from one agency to another, but ideally, they're still going to be there.
And I just, I mean, for us, we just focus on what's in front of us and not to get caught up in kind of what's above us. And as of right now, we're moving forward. We can anticipate certain revenue from the entitlement grants, our special education programs, and that's what, based on budget, moving forward. I haven't heard of anything, but you just hear the rhetoric and then, you know, you just see how that's going to play out above us. But the good news for us, and I keep saying this to the people I talk to, is, you know, our state, I think, is, we're the number one our state, I think, is, we're the number one school system in the country by far. And our state values education, and we have a Governor, we have state legislators, state officials, local officials that, you know, support education. So I think, I think we'll be in a good, good spot.
Okay. Other questions for the superintendent? Okay, I just had some follow-up questions. So the, I think you mentioned this, but I just want to clarify, in the two revolving funds, so to speak, that we're, that I'm interested in just knowing what, what our remaining balance will be, once we use these funds for 2026. So specifically, school choice, because, you know, I agree with you that we want to be, we want to be using those as much as we can, but we also don't want to be bringing them to such a level that if we do have an unanticipated expense, we can't therefore have a way to absorb that expense. And an example is 20 new students coming into the school year, mid-year, which we have had happen, and we were able to absorb those students because we had school choice funds. And that wasn't a planned event. It wasn't something that we could have anticipated, and it happened, and we did it, and we've done it very well, and we've continued to support those students. So I think just, I guess my, my short question is, what is our anticipated balance of school choice after, after we use these funds?
So after these funds, our anticipated balance will probably be between 300, I would say $300,000 to $400,000 going into next year. So that's, that's the lowest it's, it's been in a long time. But the, the other strategy is to try to not utilize as much for this year right now, so we can carry over our balance, which will bump that up a little bit for that. And that's what we're trying to do right now. So that, the school choice account is, is one account that we would, you don't want to spend that down too much.
Right.
Because just like you said, when you have those unanticipated situations, like, and that's why I just say, like, for example, the entitlement grant, we probably receive around like $150,000, and if that all of a sudden went away, we could utilize choice to provide those services. So we just want to position ourselves there, so we're probably around $300,000 to $400,000. We put a budget freeze on since January for us, so we're only right now spending what we really need to spend to try to anticipate, you know, utilizing some of those funds. The other, the other one that I think you mentioned was our athletic revolving account.
Yeah.
So currently, we have $310,000, but that's the collection of the use of fees for the spring. We probably will spend, you know, just anticipated, you know, with transportation, and then every time our teams go to the playoffs, which is great, but.
Which they will.
A little bit more money. But, so we'll probably be carrying over in the athletic revolving, I want to say around $70,000, $75,000.
So that's, that's a significant, I think, decrease than prior years.
Yes, that's, yeah, we, we will be carrying over $150,000, maybe $200,000. So that's, that's another revolving account that, that will be, be low. I mean, for us, it's, we get through this budget, we go into next year, we see what the challenges are, and then I think one of the strategic goals for us will be to try to build those revolving accounts back up. So it would be your school choice, it would be your athletic revolving, and let's not forget, circuit breaker is the other one that we've spent down a lot. And the circuit breaker is the reimbursement for special education, transportation, things like that. So I think those three revolving accounts, and as we get into next year, would be something that we would want to maintain and try to build back up.
Great. And then overall, generally, I think you've said this before, but there's intention throughout to reduce any reliance on contracted services where we can absorb that.
Yeah, so that's a part of the other big savings. And I think the restructuring of special education is we're saving contracted services, we're bringing the services back into the schools. So I think it was around $200,000 to $250,000, which helped us offset the budget. So that was a lot of work done by our special education department.
Great. Yeah, and I guess just a general statement, you know, I think this is always really tough when you have to discuss, you know, but at a high level, it's the school budget, and there's no, there's no people attached to it.
Correct.
But at a lower, at the, at the grassroots level, these are people who like, who, who are impacted by our decisions on a daily and yearly basis. And so I really appreciate that we're trying to maintain our services and keep our, our district moving forward, still being optimistic, so that we're not cutting out, we're not cutting out funds that we, we are guaranteed to get, or we're supposedly supposed to get, but also being somewhat conservative in keeping a little bit of a rainy day fund available for the unanticipated. But I, I do, it's so important that we try to maintain services and, and keep our, our district moving forward, because these are individuals who are the most vulnerable, one of the most vulnerable populations in our community, and I'm not speaking just to certain populations, I'm speaking to all the students in our community. You know, this is the way we sustain them, like, by keeping our, our schools funded, by, by coming together as a community and continuing to support our schools, this is how we resist what's happening at the national level that is tearing a lot of families and people apart. And, and this is how we do it. We, we fund these kind of things, which is, which are the most critical parts of our structure of our, of our society. And I'm, and I know there's lots of other things the mayor has to consider, all sorts of, of needed services, but as a school committee, I feel so strongly that this is how we make a real difference, is by continuing to fund this, our education, and, and not make decisions about cutting programs until we absolutely are, are forced to. So I appreciate the, all the work that's gone into this. I also really appreciate that you continue to be responsive and bring the, the percentage increase down. I think each time we've, we've talked about this, you've made revisions, and so I really appreciate that. And I know a lot has gone on behind the scenes, and I know people have, have taken our, you know, our message seriously, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one last question, and it's okay if, it's hard to answer now, it's more about prioritization for the future, but given the fact that FTEs did come down, you know, that always brings up concern, oh, are we covering all the, all the programs that we want to? With six left FTEs or unfilled, is, is there, is there one program or one area that was, I don't want to say the last cut, but that, that maybe you would have added, or, or is something to look forward to in the future that we should be identifying as, that needs funding?
Yeah. No, I think when we look at the FTEs, I think it was, a few of them was on student populations, right? So we didn't have the population or the need to service that population anymore, because they moved on to a, a different school. And the other piece was some of those big classes that we've had, you know, where we had eight sections, like, for example, at the Mullen. So that's grade five, we had eight teachers there, because it was a big class. So that class is now moving to grade six, but your grade three to grade four only requires seven teachers. So that FTE for that grade, that bubble grade, we, we pulled out of that. So we, that, that would be one area. So it's not impacting the class size or anything, it was just, we made moves based on student population and then the numbers in different sections.
Okay.
To reduce those FTEs.
No, that's great. Yeah, it was sort of, you know, when you get to what you need versus what you might have. For instance, last year, there was still a lot of interest in continuing to add to the music program and make sure that that continued to grow back, but.
Yes.
We're not backsliding on any of that stuff.
No, the music program is, is strong.
That would just be one example, but.
Yeah. But that's why, I'm saying for us right now, doing this for, I think, several years, I think utilizing that strategic plan, the previous one and this current one, it guides us on how to budget strategically, and we understand how important the foreign language was for this community, how important the music programs are for this community, the art programs. So for us, I think foundationally, we have all, we've enhanced all of these programs, we have these programs in place. So I look at this year's budget as, you know, I call it the survival budget, but as we go into next year's budget, we have the foundation to continue to enhance those programs when the fiscal times are, are better. I'm hoping this is a bubble for us, you know, right now financially, that next year, times might look a little bit better.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I like lean and mean instead of survival, just going forward.
I don't know why I decided to add that. It's like survival series.
Yeah.
Lean and mean, all right.
Some of us are feeling, I think. Okay, great. Any other follow-up questions? We are going to take a vote tonight on this, so just want to make sure folks feel good about where we are. And any last details? All right, then, in that case, I would accept a motion to approve the fiscal year 26 budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the vice chair votes aye. Any opposed?
I will vote present.
Present, thank you. We still have four, so we're fine.
All right.
I did that math, so don't worry.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. Thanks to the staff who put in a lot of work.
Thank you all very much, yes.
Appreciate that.
My staff that are listening.
Yes.
You should have, do something better with your lives.
We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the update on the MSBA accelerated roof project.
Mr. McSweeney?
I'm good. Thank you. So thank you again for having me here tonight. So the update is that we are progressing more forward with the MSBA. We are in that next phase with them. We've been assigned an OPM, our own project management firm. That firm is P3 Inc. out of Normal, Mass. The project manager that we've been assigned with them is Robert Tedesco. Been in contact with him, he's on vacation this week. Once he gets back, we're going to be setting up meetings with them to start the ball rolling as we meet with them, to, you know, come up with our plan and, and go from there. We've also been assigned our designer firm, it's Ganette Fleming, and they're out of Boston, Mass. And Ed DeSalvio is our project manager with them. So again, after we meet with our own project manager and we get the ball rolling with them, then we'll start a good contract and talks with the design firm. So that's kind of where we're at right now with that. So we are progressing slowly but forward.
Great. And there was items in the pocket related to the details on the roof, replacement kind of scope and stuff for your reference, I believe that was provided for this, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for Mr. McSweeney on, on the project?
So I just, I know one of the questions that keeps coming up is especially at the Knockmole School, is the solar panels, right? A big section of what we're replacing is over the auditorium and gym in the roofs, a big section of solar panels on there, and we're, we'll be working with MRSCO, who is the service provider for the panels, on the age of them, and when we get into talks with the designing firm, what's the best course of action to take with these panels, you know, because of their age, and the fact that they do have to come off and then go back on, there is a cost involved with that. So we'll be working with the design firm on all that and make sure that we, and I'll be working with Molly from City Hall on that as well. We've, I've been talking with her numerous occasions about, you know, what's the best course of action, so. There'll be a lot of communication and a lot of discussions on that.
Okay. And then I think for both of these projects, there will be a city allocation, right, contribution that would be required, or?
Yeah.
And what is, what does that have to be, that would be part of the capital improvement plan discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Callahan?
Presuming everything goes well, when does it start?
Next one.
Next summer?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we're not in any position to do any, any kind of construction or planning for this summer at all, as, you know, we still have to go through the design phase and really start getting numbers and plans, and then we have to put it up to bid and get the contractor online, and all that takes time. So we wouldn't even be looking to start any construction or any kind of replacement work until next summer.
You weren't here for the last time this roof got fixed, but the public was told the skate park would not close during that, and then the date.
I am not going to comment on that, I can't guarantee it, yea or nay.
So, look into it, though?
Yep.
Because everybody knows it was one of the most used playgrounds in the entire city, all types of weather.
It's all going to depend on what, how we can do a lay-down area and how invasive it's going to be for that area, you know, what, what kind of space we can allocate for the construction project.
I think the major concern the last time was things falling off the roof on that side of the building, but maybe they should be more careful.
Yeah, and I think if we're looking at it, because we're going to be further away from it, we might be able to keep it open, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to guarantee one way or another.
Okay.
So.
Don't worry, I'll, you know.
Yeah.
I will try my best to keep it open.
Ms. Shaw?
I'm just curious, how old are the solar panels?
I think they were done when the renovations were done, so I think we're at the 15-year range, and they were good for about 20 years.
Right.
We're probably right at 20 then.
Yeah.
That all happened around 25 years ago, so.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's wrong. That's 2012.
Yeah, so, so we're, you know, the 13, 15 year range.
Both of you are turning that to mine, I can tell.
They are, they are.
I was, I was thinking about high school, not the Knockmole.
I know, that's kind of one of the big questions that Molly and I have been talking about, we've been going back and forth with MRSCO, and it may be, you know, we look at, do we extend out and get new panels with MRSCO and do another PPA with them, or do we just pull them off and, and research and go somewhere else? So that's why it'd be part of the discussions, so.
I think that's a, that's a healthy conversation to be having, and so much has changed with solar technology, and I think we've, former member Cole always had an issue with the solar panels.
And they're great, they're great to have, they're a great afterthought.
Yeah, absolutely.
At the schools. So it's definitely something we'll be looking at keeping in one, one form or another.
Okay, great. Are there any requirements for, you know, forming like a building committee as part of the MSBA project? Do you know, are you aware of any requirements, or would you do that?
There are requirements, but in the past, as I've worked here, we've had a, you know, a small committee.
Yeah.
Within to work with the OPM firm and with the design firm.
Right.
To make sure everybody's inclusive and we make sure we're hitting all the right spots.
Okay. So for example, issues about the skate park, yeah, so you'll keep us posted if that, if they're in a form of a building committee.
The skate park was going to be storage.
All right, any other questions?
Well, at this, at this juncture with the MSBA, do, do some, do some projects sort of come out of the funnel at, at the design and OPM phase? I mean, there's no way.
Not really. Once you make it to this phase, you're, you're, you're on the, on the track to, to get the project completed.
Okay, that, that's, that was the question.
Yeah, no, we've, we've kind of passed that hurdle, and thanks to the work of, you know, the principals meeting with me, and the vendors have been coming out to doing all the surveys and interim questions, and everybody meeting with us and getting us through that, that last hurdle. Once, once we're assigned the OPM and the design firm, you're, you're on the track to, to get the project.
Excellent, that's great to hear.
I think that's why this MSBA accelerated repair program is so important, because it is projects that need to get done, opposed to like, a concept of, whether it be a regional school or a school building project that still has to go through, and then at the end of it, has to go to the public to vote on, or things like that. So this isn't, this isn't like that, which is good.
It's a little tangential. So I know, you know, remember Callahan is concerned about the skate park. Where are we, there's been a big, let us say, enthusiasm for the GAGA pit. Is that going to take place, and would it be able to stay open?
I haven't heard anything with the GAGA pit over in that area. From what I understand, it's going to be over on the other side, over by the playgrounds.
Oh, okay.
And everything, so, yeah, when that gets installed, that will be.
It'll be further along.
Yeah, yeah, that's looking over more towards the, the basketball courts and that other playground, so it's over that area, so that won't be affected at all.
There's tremendous enthusiasm.
And Foursquare, I know, is a big thing over there as well.
Yeah, so, okay, great, thank you.
Picturing the face, confused faces, everybody at home thinking GAGA pit.
We had this conversation, the only reason I know what you're talking about is because The only reason I know what you're talking about is because we had that conversation before. It's a type of game, we'll just say that.
Yes, it's a very popular game among, you know, sort of the seven to 12-ish.
Oh, it goes up in ages as well.
Well, this is true.
Yes.
I play as well, so, yeah.
We have one at the campground that I go to during the summer and see all ages of people out there playing. So it's pretty interesting.
Okay, any other questions? But we really appreciate you for Mr. McSweeney for the update.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an update on the Northern Essex Community College-Wittyear Technical High School collaboration study, which was shared with all of you via email. Is it also posted on the web somewhere?
Uh, we were supposed to do that. I don't know if it's actually up anywhere yet.
Might get up there eventually.
Uh, that was the plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to just give a quick, like, how?
Sure.
What it is?
Yeah. I will say, I would like to keep this on the agenda maybe for next week, too, because I do have another meeting coming up.
Sure, you can.
So I might have a little bit more information. So just like some background, right? I think I do this every time we start talking about, and we have our school committee, Whittier Rep here as well. So after the vote, we, you know, move forward with, I want to say the 11 communities move forward with a task force group that we put together looking at the regional agreement, okay? So we got to a certain point in that where, I will say, one of the districts, Haverhill, made it very clear that they weren't interested in changing the regional agreement at this time. Towards the end of that process, Northern Essex and Whittier came together on a possible shared campus model. They worked together to form a small working group that worked with the UMass, what's going on? Johnohue. Johnohue Institute to work on this. What would this look like, right? And so I was hoping I'd have some slides to show tonight, but they haven't sent them over yet. So that's why I want to put this on next week, so I can just share it. So essentially, if you haven't looked at the report yet, what they landed on, they really were just looking at possible models and what's that look like, right? And so next week, when we have some slide, or next meeting, when we have some slides, where they landed on is a true shared campus model. I mean, Northern Essex has a lot of land to utilize. They have a spot where Whittier could build. And, but then they also, it'd be shared campus, because there are things administratively, maintenance, those types of things might be shared between the Northern Essex campus and the Whittier campus. And they have also classroom spaces that could possibly be used, depending on what programs they wanted to do it with. So that was one, one area that they were looking at. And then there's another area where they just form a completely new school, right? There was like these four columns, and that was the third column. And the fourth column was, this is something that's never been done before in the country. And they truly merged these two schools together to have a pathway for vocational education all the way through community college. Most likely with something like that, there would be a lot of state involvement, obviously, in that. So that was something that interested the group. So after the Donahue report was finalized, and again, we just got it not that long ago now, another working group has formed. And so now this one is a working group that all 11 cities and towns are sitting on. It's essentially all 11 cities and towns, it is, you know, Northern Essex is heavily involved, Whittier is heavily involved. We've had four meetings. I'll be honest, some of them have been productive, some of them haven't been very productive. I think the last meeting was pretty productive. Last meeting was the first time Raleigh, Raleigh had not attended any of the meetings. And so Raleigh attended the last meeting, which was a positive sign. And where we're at is, you know, a big part of this is that, you know, Whittier and Northern Essex wanted to stay in the line, and we just heard from MSBA, right, of the accelerated repair. Because we voted down, you know, over 80% of the people who voted for the Whittier school project, you know, 80% voted down, so they didn't want to lose that funding, right? And so they went back to MSBA and said, hey, look, we've got this idea for a shared campus model. We would like to stay in line there. What do we need to do to do that, right? And the first thing was to do the Donahue report. By July 1st, they have to have, the MSBA has to have a letter signed by all 11 communities saying that they think this is worth looking into. Doesn't commit anything more than that. The commitment will come from, the 11 cities and towns will have to pay for a feasibility study to what that looks like, okay? So that's kind of what's coming next. Again, that would still be based off of the old formula for the regional school. So right now, New Report's probably looking at $120,000 that we would have to give to have the study get completed. I think it's worth it to look at it. Again, it doesn't commit us to anything. And I think, you know, to me, once we get to the end of this, then the 11 cities and towns will have to make decisions. What has been agreed upon is that even though there are some districts or at least one district that doesn't want to change the regional agreement right now, it's been agreed upon by all 11 that if this moves forward, then obviously we would need a brand new agreement, right? Not a redo of the old agreement, but a literally a brand new agreement. So again, I think that was a step in the right direction, too, that everyone agreed upon that. So let's see, that's where we're at right now. Like I said, Raleigh was the first time they attended last week, or a couple of weeks ago now. We do have another meeting coming up next week. Like I said, it's been positive. They haven't been, they've been tense meetings, for sure. There's a lot of, you know, still a lot of feelings around the table, I will say. But like I said, I do think this is an interesting, and Mary, you're welcome to comment as well. I mean, you know, I don't know what's going on at the school committee level, because they have been kind of not involved in this part of the process, but I know that they're keeping track and, you know, yeah, if you want to, go ahead, sure, that'd be great.
Thank you very much. I think the school committee has remained on the sideline because the regional agreement is not really the purview of the school committee. It's the regional agreement that's the reason why we exist. So it's really the municipalities who ultimately will have to vote to amend and vote on that regional agreement. I don't think we even have sort of a say in that at any point in time. To add on, I just learned recently that I believe that both Ipswich Select Board and the Georgetown Select Board voted to ink their signature on the letter for, to submit to MSBA. I think the goal is to have that signed by June 1st by all the communities. And also in terms of the feasibility study, I believe the, the school committee has agreed to appropriate about $500,000 towards the feasibility study. And Northern Essex is also agreeing to contribute 500,000. The estimate right now is 2.5, so that would leave 1.5 million to be divided amongst the 11 communities for the feasibility study. And to the mayor's point, approximately 120.
Would have left 1 million left over. I think we're 12%, according to our capital allocation. That's where I came up with the 120, but.
Yeah, we just voted 500,000.
Okay, so maybe Northern Essex is doing more. I don't know. Or maybe that's changed since Lex said, we haven't had a meeting, but that's what was said at our last meeting. Great, thank you. Yeah, so that's where we're at with that.
So I understand it's all fairly conceptual at this point, but all four of those plans involve a new building?
Yes, yeah. But really, it was just like the second column there, and like I said, I'll show the slides next week, hopefully if they send them along to us. But the second column was more two completely separate schools, but we're just building on their land. And the first one was, I think, staying in your current building. So again, I do think there's some value in looking at, in looking at that third and fourth option. And there could be some sort of hybrid in the middle, too. That's what, that was talked about a lot in the meeting. Regardless, a lot of these things are years away, too, right? So that's why, you know, the talk of the regional agreement, the current one, is still ongoing, and I still think there are some things that we can do there to get going on that, because there are things that are going to have to be done to the current building that they're in as well. And so, you know, like Mary just said, a lot of the, so we have cities and towns, right? So all the towns, this has to go through town meeting, which is happening right now in all these places. So that's why they're voting on signing that letter to like agree to the feasibility study and agree that this is worth looking into further. And then Amesbury-Haverhill and New Report will also have to sign a letter to send in. And that's it. Any more questions?
And the letter would be from the city council or your office?
It's from me, yeah.
Okay. You think you'll agree?
Yes, I will, but I tell you, I just, I haven't been enthralled with the, I shouldn't say I haven't been enthralled with the process. Like I said, I'm glad that we're involved and that we're being brought together. But I've been incredibly frustrated, you know, with the meetings I went to. Haverhill has come around a little bit, which has helped, I think. You know, again, unfortunately, I thought we were making good progress in our task force group, even though Haverhill had been pretty clear they didn't want to touch the regional agreement. The rest of the communities, we were pretty close. We actually had a couple of communities already vote on what we would have changed about it, because, you know, New Report had done all that pre-work, you know, around the time of the special election. You know, Newbury took a vote on it, and I think Raleigh was looking at it. So I mean, we had some momentum there. You know, again, the shared campus model, and it kind of diffused that a little bit. And at the end of the day, if you've got one district holding out, you know, as of right now, that stops it, you know, unless we went like the legislative route, which we could do still. Right now, it just kind of put the skids on it. And that's the same with, you know, this is why we were kind of glad that Raleigh came back to the table, because that's the same thing. We didn't know what MSBA would say if Raleigh continued to stay away and then decided not to, you know, not to sign on. So still a little bit of questions out there. I do think it's the right thing to do to move forward, to look at this model. But I think that still gives us options, depending on whatever this lands. And if it's a new agreement, then New Report will have to make a decision then if they want to continue to be a part of it. That's the way I look at it.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess we'll get an update at a future meeting with the slides.
Yes.
Once you get those, we can either do that at the next meeting or the meeting after.
Yeah, and the slides will just say what I just said, but just better.
Which is better. You did a pretty job. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion on our school committee meeting schedule, which we've talked about previous meetings. We are, we do have an opportunity, which is actually presented by the city councils, even though they inadvertently did not decide to, this was their intention. But anyway, the opportunity is to revisit when we are meeting. We have traditionally met, as everyone knows, first and third Mondays. Tonight, we are meeting on a Tuesday, because supposedly there was a city council meeting last night, but I don't know if that actually happened.
No.
No, so we've been moving our, we've been moving our meetings around.
Right, we did it because we always do that when we fall on vacation. City Council now doesn't meet then, so like they actually met last Tuesday.
So it's been.
So they didn't meet on the last Monday, so we kind of had a Tuesday meeting for no reason.
We've been doing a lot of shuffling, as everyone knows, and members who've been on this longer know. So we are required to try to avoid conflicts with city council, even though city council's not required to avoid conflict with us. So all that being said, we traditionally met first and third Mondays. There are other reasons that first and third Mondays have presented some problems with us, for us, and one of them is vacations. Also, holidays tend to be on Mondays and so forth. So one of the proposals is, in front of you, is just to continue to have our Monday meeting schedule, correct, Ms. Yell?
Yes.
And then the other proposal is to move our meetings to the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, starting in January of 2026, correct? Or no, starting, sorry, yes, starting in January 2026. And that is because we already know the city council schedule for the remainder of the 2025 calendar year. And so we've been able to make adjustments based on that. We don't know what the city council's going to do about their revised schedule in 2026. They may go back to their standard meeting, or they may keep their current weird swapping of every three weeks or whatever they're doing. And, but we don't know that, and we won't know that, they don't vote on that until, I think, beginning of the year.
Yeah, January.
Yeah. So that's what you have in front of you is the first draft that we all reviewed and then the version with the Wednesdays. Monday and Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, yes, go ahead.
I know we talked about this last time. Why would we move, I think the Wednesday's a good idea, because we've never been fucked with anything. Why wouldn't that start in August, though? Why wouldn't we just start everything, the whole thing?
I guess we could. We just, we had already sort of figured out the schedule for the remainder of the year. And I don't know, Ms. Yell, probably.
But we still have three conflicts, though.
We have, well, the August one, I think, is the summer retreat, which I think all of us can figure out what we want to do there.
But the October and November?
October, November, you're right. We still have a conflict with that. I had proposed to the council president that we, one of them we move and one of them they move. He has not responded to me yet. But, you know, that seems doable, that we could figure out an arrangement for that. I don't know, I don't, unfortunately, that was not something Ms. Yell and I talked about, so we'd have to figure out if there's availability. I think that's a little farther. So doing this for, starting in January, gives us time to reserve the spaces. We've already reserved all the spaces for the remainder of 2025.
Okay.
So that would be a little bit of a shuffling around.
That's fine.
Is that wrong, Ms. Yell?
No reservations.
Oh, okay.
I have to get for next school.
Oh, okay, so we could potentially do this.
But we have to know.
We have to know if they're available.
We'll be betting, yes.
Well, I'm not going to get in the way of that. And like I said before, I won't be here for January, so that doesn't matter to me. See you. Bye. I think it's good to have the body as a whole to have that never conflicting and changing schedule.
Yeah, I think Wednesdays are, I mean, I thought it was a good idea. I think Wednesdays are typically a day that we don't have a ton of meetings on throughout the month, so. Again, I, this is selfish, but I'm the only one that goes to both of these meetings, so.
I know.
You know, again, Wednesdays are fine for me if it works for everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, Wednesdays seem like a good idea.
We have a meeting next week. You can put one together with Wednesdays for the whole thing.
But do you mean?
We could do that. Would that be okay, Ms. Yell, if we postpone this vote to our May 5th meeting? Okay, we just keep kicking the can, but.
But is that what the mayor was saying? Is that all Wednesdays is just as preferable?
Oh, I mean, I'll make it work regardless. I mean, again, I don't think it matters if we start in January or start earlier, but I mean, if we want to do it earlier, I think that's great.
How about staff have any concerns if we started in September?
No, I think that works.
All right, or August?
I mean, think about it, we do this so much further in advance. I mean, city council knows it's like in a meeting like after they've already formed their committees and then they vote on their schedule for the year. So again, I think we're ahead of the game as far as that goes.
I think we are. I mean, I do think this is a good, you know, like I was being facetious in the fact that the city council forced us to make this decision, but I think it's a good discussion and it does, there are inherent conflicts with, with the current model regardless. Okay, all right, well then we will postpone the vote on this and consider a revised version that looks at Wednesdays. And I guess, Ms. Yell, we just have to confirm with the senior center, community center, that those times are available. I know this is a popular place.
I have one question.
Yes.
How did it get decided second and fourth Wednesday and not first and third?
Because there's an existing conflict with first and third Wednesdays.
I think Planning Board meets here on that Wednesday. I believe that was it.
Why, is it, is second and fourth a problem?
I can move something around.
You have something that would simply, that would be better for you personally?
Well, I gotta, well, I gotta move 10 families.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Schedule.
Well, then are you inclined to keep it 2025 the same and wait till 2026 to make this change? You are a decider of this body, you could, that could be a reason. I mean, professional conflicts.
Yeah, I mean, if it was just me, but it's, you know, it's...
It's your clients.
Yeah, it's a, well, it's a city group for grandparents raising grandkids and moving 10 families and staff for the childcare. Yeah, but I can, so if we're going to take the vote next week, I'm going to see them on the second Wednesday of this month. I could see what the deal is, but, yeah, but I'm not going to be, you know, I will make it work somehow with them. We'll just have to figure it out.
Okay, but I mean, we have an option to not, you could wait until 2026.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem. I think, wait till January, I think that's consistent, and then everyone will still know, so it gives you some time.
Okay, well, that gives me more than just...
More time. I think that's a fair argument, Ms. Shaw, that, you know, this is something we've all, I plugged them into my calendar for the remainder of the year, you have made accommodations, and I think... So with that being said, are folks open to voting on this tonight?
Sure, even without the vote, too?
It's up to you guys. I mean, one of them's not going to care.
We'll have to watch what we say.
We'll go on the budget, although, I guess we can vote on the calendar, right?
What's that?
Yeah, we vote on the budget, but we're not going to vote on the calendar. We need everybody here to vote on the calendar. Budget's fine, whatever, like, we'll figure it out.
All right, well, I think, actually, I think you do have a fair point, you know, let's postpone until Monday night with the consideration, because, yeah, we do have one, at least one member who will be particularly impacted, and just want to make sure this is okay. Okay, so we're going to postpone. Thank you, Ms. Yell, for doing the preparation, I appreciate that. All right, so then we move on to subcommittee updates. Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Callahan?
We met on the 17th. Essentially, we talked about the budget, which we just did, so there's not much to tell. And we went over the contract, NPA contract, it was successfully signed, or MOU. When is that vote again?
I think it's this week. I think they're doing a couple of days, right? Yeah, a few days this week.
That's all I have. Next meet on... Andy and I were talking about this the 21st of May. Is that what's for water?
I think so, is it a Thursday?
The Wednesday instead of the Thursday.
Oh, okay.
21st of Wednesday.
I already had that on my calendar, so we must have already talked about it.
Yeah.
We meet Wednesday, the 21st of May, at 8:00 at Central Office. Andy's bringing notes.
I dropped the ball last time. I'll, I'll want it.
All right, next item, I mean, next Subcommittee Policy, Ms. Shaw.
Yes, so we will be meeting on Monday, May 12th at 7:00 at Central Office.
And we're continuing to discuss policies related to technology?
This is true.
Yes, and I did share the ones that we're reviewing with a member, Hall, who is going to review those with the Communications Subcommittee when you meet on the first. Communications Subcommittee, Ms. Hall's not here, but I mentioned when they're meeting next. Anybody else from the Communications Subcommittee want to give an update or anything?
No.
We meet till Thursday?
At 4:30 at the library.
And Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, Ms. Higgins is not here, so we can get an update next time. They believe meet, they have a scheduled meeting already for the May 20th at 6:00. And Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, we should talk about the next steps on that. When we're through the budget, we should...
Yeah, my plan was for June, to start talking about that in June, and then maybe when we break for July, people, that will be the opportunity for them to fill out what they want to fill out, and then when we come back, we'll compile that info, okay?
And I think if you need additional support, you should ask, because I think there are probably members who would be willing to support you on that Subcommittee, even if we are already on another...
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so that's it for Subcommittee Updates, Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, just a quick, Ms. McSweeney's here, but he responded, you don't have to come Emergency response to a sewer line break in front of the high school on April 15th. There was, you know, we got some calls, because people saw the, you know, the good news is the front lawn is repaired, and there was no damage to the pipe.
Infertilized. I said infertilized.
Infertilized. All right, good, Ms. McSweeney.
So, yeah, so there wasn't actually a break in the pipe, so we lucked out on there, and I do want to say thank you to the DPS crew.
Yep.
And those guys for coming out and helping, so they were fantastic, so good collaboration working with them. But what ended up happening is, is there's a, in that front section of lawn, there's actually a manhole cover that was buried. It was about a foot and a half down, that, until we looked at the plans, we didn't know it was there, but what we found was that there was actually sewage bubbling up from the ground. Once we get out there and we figured out what was going on, the actual ring where the manhole sits got dislodged from the brickwork underneath, and the pipe had been clogged with some tree roots, so it was slowly feeding out to the street, so it backed up, and then because the ring slid off, it gave a gap where the water could escape out. So that's how we ended up finding it. So kind of a little fortuitous, but there was no backup into the school, so we did luck out, luck out there. But the DPS crew was able to clear the line, get everything flowing well. Last week, they had a company come out, and they actually camered the line to see what the damage was, what was going on in there, and they found that there were some roots growing in. So the line goes from that section of grass right out to the street, so it goes right in between the trees, right under that brick wall, right out, right where the trees are, that's where the roots are growing in. They were able to get that all cleared out, and then working with them, they're going to add that line into their preventive maintenance program, where it's going to be treated over the summer, and then continuously from there, so we won't have that issue again. So there wasn't any collapse or major damage to the sewer line, so we're very lucky with that. And then we're working with DPS again to actually raise that manhole above to be grade level, so if something does happen, we don't have to dig it up again. But right now, it is still kind of a hole with the fencing around it, so it is, you know, not the most, prettiest thing to look at right now, but, you know, because we're all looking at raising it and then clearing it out from there, so...
But any potential impact on those trees? Those are some pretty awesome trees out front.
No, no. And it's, you know, tree roots, I mean, with the drought that we're in, they're...
They're growing everywhere.
They're trying to find whatever they can, so that's why they're getting into the sewer lines and they're doing what they need to do to stay alive. So there shouldn't be any damage to the trees or anything like that.
Do you have a sense, did you guys get a sense of how old the lines are, the pipes? I mean, because around the city, sometimes when they pull them up, they realize they're from the 20s.
So when they camered the line, they found out from that manhole going out towards the street, the first 10 feet is PVC, and then the next 40 feet or so is the clay pipe. But they said it was still in good shape, so... But then from that manhole going all the way back into the school is all the new PVC pipe.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah, it was just that last 40 feet going out in the street that didn't get changed during the renovation and construction.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McSweeney, much more detailed than I was going to provide. I had liquid Drano clear the problem and it was good enough, so... And just a school choice update, just that we're advertised, we have over 90 applicants, actually even more now. We got 10 more applicants today. So we remain open at 5:00 PM till May 1st, and we anticipate a lottery in, I think, most of the grades. That will take place on May 7th. And then I believe that our next school committee will add the vote on Grade 11 and Grade 12, although we discussed that we didn't officially vote on those five slots for both classes.
And then, sorry, go ahead.
I just had a question. So you said there's going to be a lottery in probably most grades?
Yes.
Is that taking into account people who might be already choicing in, who have siblings in those grades?
No, those, those would get first preference. They get in financially, yeah. Authority, school choice, family.
Yep, okay.
They wouldn't be part of that lottery.
Mr. Walker?
No, my question was, I forgot that we had done it, so I was wondering why those, the 11 and 12 weren't in there, so...
So what is your recommended, what is the recommended allotment for 11 and 12? Because I think we asked you to go back and talk to the...
Yeah, we put, Grade 11 was five and Grade 12 was five. Five slots for both.
And part of that was in consideration that we know there's demand because of particularly Georgetown District, there's a lot of interest.
A lot of interest, yeah, we're receiving, I think, for different districts with some of the financial issues that are happening, more people looking, I think, for school choice. And, I mean, I think Newburyport Public Schools is a great place to be, and I think of all districts that have school choice, I think we get the most applicants, so it's a good thing.
We have good people.
We have good people.
All right, yeah, so we'll add that for a vote next week, which will happen before the lottery takes place.
Correct.
We'll be able to decide how many spots we want to make available. Hopefully, it'll be as advertised. Anything else for the superintendent? Any questions? All right, anything under new business?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Callahan, sorry.
I just think the district should know that, and Ms. Walker will know this, both Carter and Broadstreets are having work done by National Grid, like tearing up the road, doing samples, because they're replacing gas mains. And that also includes a section of Merrimack that is between those two, so the bus company probably wants to know that random days, they're going to have to go around.
Do we have those dates?
And I was thinking about the Carter Street, because a lot of high school students park, so I don't know if we can tell them, hey?
There are signs...
And there are signs, but the signs are there until November, really, they're April to November, so they're not necessarily there tomorrow.
Okay.
So you don't want anybody to get caught out, say, oh, no one, they haven't done anything the last three days, I'm going to park here, and they get towed.
Do we have the dates of when that's happening?
15th to November 30th, but they don't have exact dates on what portion will be shut.